I have asked Liz Wheatley with the DeKalb County Children's Act Center to come and open us in prayer today. So Liz?
Ms. Fred Giff, our Father, eternal Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Your name is holy, your name is sacred, your name is dear to your children. May all that is said and done today bring honor and glory to your name. I thank you for how you have blessed Fort Payne. I thank you that the government, the city of Fort Payne rests on your shoulders and your shoulders are able to bear it. Your shoulders bore the sins of this world, is more than capable to carry the government of Fort Payne. I thank you for the leaders that you have placed in these positions for such a time as this. I pray that they would follow your wisdom, your guidance in every transaction that comes their way. I thank you for how you've blessed Fort Payne financially. You've given them their daily bread. You blessed them in the past, you blessed them today. We ask for your blessing, yet future. We would even ask, oh Lord, that you would send new businesses, compel new businesses to locate in Fort Payne, to use our buildings that we have, to help us grow and bless and increase the welfare of this great city. I pray that we would not fall into the temptation to do anything for our own good, to lift up our own name, or for greed. I pray that we would make humble decisions today. I pray that again, your name would be honored and glorified. We praise you for who you are. We pray, oh Lord, that every word that is said would be honorable in your sight. Give clarity today. Bring to remembrance the things that these folks have studied, that they've prepared to present at today's meeting. I pray that everything that is done would bring honor and glory to your name. We love you and pray to. And it's in the great name of Jesus that we pray. Amen.
Let's place the flag. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to thank everybody again for coming today. Has everybody had a chance to review the minutes from last meeting?
Motion to approve.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to approve. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. Everybody had a chance to review the payments of accounts?
Motion to approve, payment of accounts.
Got a motion, do we have a second?
Aye, a second.
Got a second. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carried. We'd like to say we missed Johnny today. He is, I think, on vacation, so... Okay, our first order of business is we have a former councilman here, Walter Watson, and we want to present a certificate of appreciation to. So Mayor?
Walter, I'm very proud to have worked with you for the last four years. I didn't know you before, I've come to know you, I've come to love you. I know that you've always had the best interest of the city of Fort Payne in your heart, and you always will. I know that these guys have worked with you longer than I have. Everybody here knows you. They know what kind of individual you are. And we just want to say thanks. I mean, that's basically... And these guys may have fun if they're used to saying, but I just want to say thanks. And on behalf of the League of Municipalities, Walter Watson, Councilman of Fort, City of Fort Payne, for 20 years of distinguished and dedicated service to the citizens of Fort Payne, and for his efforts to strengthen municipal government and promote the importance and understanding of progressive, responsible leadership. Thank you.
Thank you.
Walter never loves the words.
I definitely appreciate what these ladies and gentlemen here are doing. When we first started out, it was, I remember coming to the council meeting and not really knowing what I was doing. Amen. But after a while, we just get in there and we learn, and we pull our bootstraps up and we learn. There were some difficult things that we had to do, but I found that the most important thing is a team, just building a team. Sometimes we just agree, sometimes we're mad at each other, but when we came back to the table and we could always agree, the city of Fort Payne was better for it. I think that spirit still lives here in these chambers, and I want to encourage you guys to continue to do that, from reporting all the way up to what all you guys do. I mean, I'm just honored, and all the parking heads, what you guys do in the times that we fuss, and the times we don't have enough money and we stress things, but God still, you know, has a way of working things out. So I'm proud to live in Fort Payne, proud to have this, and most of all, I'm proud to have a family that I know that's going to make sure this government works well. So God bless you guys and continue to do good work, and when it's going to get tough, just slip hands up and give God praise and thanks, and thank you for the things that he blessed you with, and you'll feel all right about it. So, thank you very much, God bless you.
I would like to say, Walter, I really appreciate the service that you've given to Fort Payne. And probably about eight years ago, I think he was probably the first person that came to me and encouraged me to run for office. He said, you know, he'd keep... Every time I'd see him, he would ask, "Made your mind up yet? You gonna run? You gonna run?" So I thank you for that vision that you saw in me, so...
Well, and I just would like to thank you for your service. I know when, before I was on the council, you were always so approachable and would always listen to me no matter what I had to say, and I appreciate that. And even now, you've been a good mentor, and I appreciate that. I appreciate that out of girls, that out of boys, I guess. But, and I realize now how hard you did work, so I just thank you.
Well, I'd like to thank Walter. I served with Walter for eight years out of the 20 that he served. He and I had some good times, and we had some disagreements. I'm not gonna say we didn't, but I reckon that's just part of the process. But Walter always had her back, and many a times, I've heard him mention that word, "team." We're a team, and I'll agree. Walter, and I appreciate you for it. We got your back, buddy. Thank you.
You know, we did have a discussion, Andy and I, the other day, as to who held the record for the longest time in office, and we couldn't think of anybody that did any more than you and Johnny at the time. Of course, Johnny's got you, but 20 years of doing anything's great. That's all I can say.
The testament to Walter's intestinal fortitude that he did this for 20 years, I can assure you of that. I'm gonna tell a funny story on Walter. Walter's my neighbor. Some of y'all know where I live, and across the street from Walter and I, there's a church pit, and it's just about 100 feet outside the city limits, and people go target shooting. I was in town one Saturday, and Walter called and said, "Andy, there is somebody shooting a cannon at church. I want you to go over there and check it out." I go check it out, there's nobody there, and I called him up, and I said, "Walter, I'm over here." And before I could say that, he said, "Did you tell them who you are?" I said, "Yeah, I told them I was Walter Watson's neighbor." But Walter, you're a great man, great friend, and man, I love you like a brother.
I had the privilege of sitting right next to Walter for 16 years. Several people have mentioned since you've gone that although Wade's learning that I don't behave as well as I did when you were sitting up here keeping me in line, and I appreciate that. An honest, concerned, caring individual, you couldn't name anybody that had those characteristics more than Walter did. He loved the people of this town, he loved the job he did, and I've often told him, "You couldn't pay me to run for city council," but he did it, and he loved it, and he was great at it. And this town's a better place, and it's gonna be a better place from now on because of the work you did, Walter. I truly appreciate and admire the things you've done over the years.
Walter, I'd just like to say I appreciate everything that you've done, and this goes back into the 70s, when you came into our community and just assimilated right into the class, and we graduated high school together, and we walked down the last two guys in the back of the line to get our diplomas, 'cause we're the two tallest guys in the class. But you were a good councilman for me as a department head, you were actually my chairman a time or two, so I appreciate everything that we did and what we were able to accomplish together. And we agreed to disagree a few times, but it was always for the best of the city, and we always worked things out, and I appreciate the fact that you had the ability to see on down the road, because we're benefiting from that right now. And the character that you have is your foundation as a human being and a godly man, and I appreciate you for that.
Okay, our next item on the agenda, it's my privilege to be able to introduce straight from New York City, John Dursen.
New York City.
New York, we're here.
So come on down, John.
Thank you, thank you. Let's have some fun with tourism today, because tourism, as you know, is a very, very large industry in the state and in our county. And thank you, Mayor and City Council, for having me today. I appreciate it very much. And thanks Walter Watson, he was there to get, you know, to hear some of these things before. But anyhow, let's talk about tourism and what has been going on this year. DeKalb Tourism is the legislative official tourism organization deemed by the state of Alabama for this area. Fort Payne is the largest benefactor in that you guys have the most lodging facilities, including the state park and the national park, when at some point has that. But tourism, starting in 1947, the federal government and the states legislated that lodging tax is the way paid by the visitor to each area. They pay lodging tax, so it's not the local community paying lodging tax. When you go on a trip, you pay lodging tax, and a portion of that tax is used everywhere by tourism to pay for the kinds of things that you're about to see, and in both locally and at state level. So I appreciate your support over these years to make us a viable and growing industry, and I'll tell you by how much. So last year, the state of Alabama took in $12.6 billion in tourist expenditure. Now, in order to get to $12.6 billion, people had to visit the state and spend the night, or two nights, or a week, because the whole formula that is done by the state revenue office only begins when somebody spends the night, and that's true in our area as well. So last year, and by the way, the state of Alabama, this blows me away, so we're in New York City, everybody knows Alabama. We are the 14th largest tourism economy in the United States of America, including the district economy. 14! We're larger than North Carolina in dollars. These are the number of dollars spent in each state, or number 14. You know, when I was growing up, Vermont, New Hampshire, you know, New England was a big tourist attraction way back in the 50s. They're not even on the radar anymore. It's southern states. Tennessee's a little bit bigger than us, but not by much. So we have had perpetual growth in the state of Alabama tourism and at a local level all these years, including through the recession. So it's very encouraging. I also have some board members back here, including the National Park Service and Randy Greider, because what you're gonna see a little bit later this morning is about the national park that we have. But it requires, I mean, we get it, for us to keep growing, and we will, because we grew by $3 million in expenditures here in DeKalb County last year. So we went from $79 million spent by tourists in DeKalb spending the night, up to $82 million this last year. And this year, we're growing extremely well, and thanks to your support, we have had an aggressive advertising campaign, of which we're using the additional lodging tax money that you gave us strictly for advertising this area, with a focus on Fort Payne. So in this issue of Alabama Living magazine, which is the largest, highest distribution rate of any magazine in the state, on the, I'm losing my stuff, on the inside of the front cover, you will see this ad. So the June issue of Alabama Living is the travel issue. Four million people have access to this magazine in Alabama, every month. So this ad, which has a focus on Fort Payne and a focus on lodging, because I've gotta get them. It's our job, it's our mission to get people that don't live here to visit, but to spend the night with. So if they come and go the same day, yes, they buy gas, they buy food, they buy retail, which is all good, and you're getting that in sales tax revenue. But for us to receive lodging tax, and for us to go into the calculation of how tourism is doing, we encourage our guests to spend the night and make a vacation out of it, one night, two nights, all weekend. But this year, we're doing ads to support growth, and I have no doubt with this ad play, we have a new look, some of you may have seen that. So there's two things that happened here this year. It's just really good time. So we've got the additional advertising dollars, which will be used strictly for outside advertising. We got a grant from Alabama Mountain Lakes Tourist Association to redo our website and bring it up to current, you know, they changed so quick. So in that package, we also got the new branding, the identity, teaching the same name and everything, but a little bit more, you know, the business model for the look to the websites changed so much, so we're doing that. We have done radio commercials all across North Alab... I'm sorry, again. North Alabama, Tennessee, Eastern Mississippi, Western Georgia, for Third Saturday, for Fan Appreciation Weekend, last weekend, and for Rodeo Dender Festival, that were including Fort Payne in every one of those. And each one of those radio ads ask the visitor, "Please spend the night, you know, come spend the weekend with us." So when we have things like boom days, and we have Third Saturday, if we can encourage them to make a weekend trip out of it and stay, then that just helps us all the more. In addition, we're advertising on Pandora, which is a high radio, we're targeting markets that we know, we have common visitors from, like Birmingham, southern parts of the state where we get a high content in the summer and fall. We did the website, we have a new branding model, we're doing television, and we're doing ongoing ads in, you know, more, I mean, sometimes people say, "Well, we don't see it." You don't see us inside the city of Fort Payne, because our business model requires that we advertise outside the city. So you see us when you see your Alabama Living magazine, that's statewide. But when we do the radio and that kind of advertising, we target markets that are likely and proven through the demographic model we use. We have a very solid demographic formula for who's actually gonna come and visit. So we target those audiences with those ad dollars, and we do some local, we do some things with the Time Journal, that they've been very supportive. And we also, of course, have the tourism-related DeKalb publications they do with the Time Journal every once a year, so we have that exposure. Now, last week, as Brian indicated, yeah, it's her ride to New York, by the way, I was honored to be chosen to be the state ambassador for Alabama Tourism, which is Sweet Home Alabama, so it's identified as Sweet Home Alabama. And the reason I was chosen by the essentialities, the state director, to represent Alabama, number one is that we were highly represented in that event. So for the first time, a major ad campaign targeting Fort Payne happened in New York City. So I'm gonna show and tell a few pictures. The first thing that happened was that at Madison Square Gardens, now these are all extremely high foot traffic area, not just New York, there's people from all over the world here, all the time, every day, tourists. So at Madison Square Gardens, on the side of a building, a skyscraper, we have skyscraper art, and the art itself is 20 stories high. So when you're standing at Madison Square Gardens, Sweet Home Alabama, Little River Canyon. I mean, can you imagine if DeKalb Tourism tried to pay for that? So we, in this case, we got the state's support, but it's a one-time deal, because last year they did the beach, and this year they did art. So this is gonna generate, Steve Black, Superintendent of Little River Canyon National Preserve, Nikki Weiner from the Candy Center, they're gonna be a lot of visitors. They're already filling their parking lot every weekend, right? So lots of traffic going there. It's unbelievable.
How about we just play it up, John?
From June 2nd through July 2nd, so full month.
Yeah.
Yeah, tough.
So it's still up?
Yeah, it's still up.
Constant?
Yes, tough. Nine days, split at night, and this is sort of a night shot. I mean, it is just unbelievable. And they had to apply, it's actually some sort of an adhesive product that they glue on, starting with a photograph, but... And we just, while I was there during my week, part of my assignment was to do television and radio interviews. So I had television and radio interviews, and they did several that had been taped to use throughout the state of Alabama later on, so they're editing those right now. And all of this will drive business to our area. So if they come to Little River Canyon, they're most likely to stay in Fort Payne, because that's where the lodging is. And if they stay at the Southern State Park, it's still Fort Payne, and if they stay at the rental camp, a lot of them are in Fort Payne. So the second piece of this was that at the Flatiron Building, Flatiron Plaza, next to Harold Park, they have this really neat plaza area, you can sit down, it's got covered tables and umbrellas and everything like that. We built a miniature, when I say miniature, it's at the size of this room, lookout mount, with on top, so they go up the steps. They go up these steps, and when you get to the top of the steps, you are given $3.60 that's been across your head and your eyes, and you will stand there, and as you look around, you will actually see Little River Canyon, all the way around it, all the way down along the water. So if you look down, it's kinda scary, you look down and you're standing on the trees above the water. So it was done with a drone, and the video quality is just actually, you actually see all around it. And our international viewers, and the people that were there were just totally impressed. They thought, "I guess this is Alabama." And the reason for New York is, number one, the number of international guests that are on the streets all the time, and the number of nationwide guests that are in New York City just on their kitchen. So we do well with Midwestern visitors, we do well with all the southern states with visitors, especially the coastal stuff in the fall, they go, but we don't do very well in the Northeast. The Northeasters have this idea of, "Well, why would we come to Alabama? You know, they got other things closer by them." This is why. And when they do come, they love Alabama. I mean, we get that all the time. They finally came to Alabama, they love it here, some of them moved here. You know, we have a lot of things going for us that are perpetuating this. So you see the $3.60 video, you see this graphic in front of it that shows Little River Canyon, and then we've got the TV and radio support for the program. So it was a great way to see Alabama. So I got a lot of use, I don't know if you guys see my social media, but you see, in several places, I said that I was visiting Little River Canyon in New York City. And that's exactly what I was doing. So this stuff is very exciting. Now, the big piece of news to go with is this ongoing, this is a 30-second radio and TV commercial for Raycom. Raycom owns, which is a state, you know, the Alabama Retirement System owns Raycom. Forty-six NBC, CBS, ABC, and Fox affiliates nationwide are going to see the Little River Canyon commercial for the next several years on In-N-Out, you know, they rotate. So I know Councilman Taylor saw that video.
Thought it was great. Thought it was great, recommended if you haven't seen it, go look at it.
Yeah, it's on my Facebook, go to my Facebook review. So 30 seconds, and they sort of give you just a really, it's kind of, it's got a narration and then talks about walking on the green grass and the air quality and all that. It definitely makes you wanna go there, but that kind of advertising support will bring people, and this, believe me, will too. When this ad hit, our phone didn't stop, because that many people in Alabama see this. So get ready, we're gonna have a guest that's gonna drive these hotel numbers, and I'll tell you what, already the Hampton Inn has an 18-room expansion going, because the way the hoteliers work, they measure the daily rentals on a percentage basis, annualized. When that number starts hitting up into the 60 percentile annually, that means room per new hotel, and that's the reason Hampton's expanded, they're utilizing their space. That means there is a good economy, the city's growing, the destination's growing, more people wanna come here, and when that happens, we're gonna have more business, and it's gonna add a lot more dollars in both sales tax revenue and lodging tax revenue to Fort Payne and our community around.
John, in addition to the Hampton Inn expansion, there had been plans mentioned sometime in the past about adding a new hotel in that area. Do you know, do you have any information about ongoing, or still possible there?
There was one, behind the Kmart building originally, was going to be a hotel property, and I think that was an owner-related issue, and it didn't happen. But I really think that if the economy stays solid like this right now, we keep having some nationwide growth, because when they do their demographic studies, they don't just target Fort Payne. Fort Payne's the key ingredient, but they're gonna target surrounding area, and they're gonna target the tourism numbers, and they're gonna target the health of the state and the federal economy. But, you know, we got the new restaurants coming, we got a lot of things happening that are dressing up Fort Payne, including the whole Main Street program. We got a lot of really, really good things happening, and the developers see that, they're looking at it very closely, so they know when the time is right. So thank you guys, and thank you for your support. If we can keep this going, more things are gonna happen in our favor.
Thank you.
We have talked in the past with some hotels, there's still some interest. Even Hampton, when they finish this addition, plan on building a second hotel. He can't give us a timeframe, but that's in his planning, so I would think that the way things are going, some of these other hotels would want to expand.
I'm gonna have these out, and put a piece of Hampton out in New York. This is the state program that is done.
Thank you.
Yes, absolutely. You guys are very good, and thank you so much, I appreciate the time. I know I took maybe one over my limit out here, didn't hear a buzzer ring.
Well, we appreciate you coming, John, and you shared that with us. Okay, moving right along, we have a public hearing to receive comments for or against the proposed amendment as set forth by ordinance 27... as set forth by ordinance 27-8 below.
Mr. Gilbreth to address this?
Okay, Jimmy, one of you.
Hopefully everybody has kind of read over the ordinance and the amendment that we would be adding to our zoning, which will allow for smaller lot sizes than we currently allow. And mainly the, what I like to call maybe is the old town or the original town of Fort Payne. And we have a lot of lots that are available in that area that are less than the 10,500 square feet that's currently required in order to build a house on. And so this ordinance addresses that and will allow for lot sizes as low as 4,500 square feet. And so you can put a small one or two-bedroom home on that, have a small yard to have to maintain. And as I get older, I look more toward that kind of home than I, than what I have in the past when I would want a larger home. So I think this will address some issues that our zoning ordinance currently has. And I think it will also help the downtown area to redevelop. At least that's part of our hope in this. We have had no objections from anyone. Every bit of correspondence that we've been involved in has been positive. So I think it'll be a good thing for the community.
Okay, anyone here to speak for or against this ordinance?
I can motion close the hearing.
Got a motion and a second to close the hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay, on our resolutions, the ordinance that we just had the hearing for, that 27-08, first reading amending the zoning ordinance adopted April 6, 1976, as amended to add residential existing small lots, among other changes.
First reading, but if y'all are all in agreement, you can adopt it today should you so choose.
I'm with it. I make motion suspend the rules.
I'll second.
Aye.
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 Postmate.
I've got a motion to adopt.
I'll second.
Got a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay. Resolution 27-32 rescinding and repealing resolution 2016-28 and 2016-26 concerning event pay for city employees.
Well, I'd just like to say that since we have, last month, I think it was, two weeks ago or whenever it was, we passed a resolution changing the pay, the overtime and ability for us to pay the employees overtime. That eliminates the need for the event pay and I'd like to make a motion that we pass to approve this resolution.
I'll second that.
Who got a motion and a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. I would like to say that I've had a lot of positive comments on that since we made that change.
I have too.
And I really, I really think it was the right thing to do.
Well, I felt like it was the right thing for our employees. It's going to cost us some money and we realize that, but it's not going to be a great deal of money and department heads are going to have to help us and take care of holding overtime to a minimum if they can. And I think it'll be good.
I agree with you and I've had quite a few comments and appreciative comments about it from all departments. And I think everybody understands now, once we got into it a couple of weeks, it affected all the city employees. Not, the police were primarily focused on as far as them having to change the schedule. But this is something that's beneficial to all the city employees and I think we did the right thing. I'm not concerned that it's going to be a budget breaker. We looked at that when we did this. So I think we did the right thing and I'm glad we did it.
I agree, it makes it a lot less complicated.
Right.
And the best thing about it is to me is that it's best for our employees and retention and just overall effective departments.
And I'm like Red, you know, it's going to be up to these department heads to make sure that that overtime don't get out of hand. And, you know, we'll be able to see that when it does and we'll be able to take action at that point, so.
We retain our employees, that saves us money in the long run. And that's part of the driving force behind this is to keep our employees satisfied that we're trying to look in their business interest and happy employees are good employees and are long-term employees. And that's best served for the whole city of Fort Payne.
If you take care of your employees, your employees are going to take care of you, so.
Yeah, exactly. And I think that's one thing that gets lost is the retention. I know studies that I had done in the past show that it costs your company or whatever, a year's salary to replace someone. And, I mean, if we have people rotating in and out, that's a, that's a cost that we don't usually look at or realize, but it is happening and costs us a lot more money than had we kept those employees.
Okay, moving on to new business. Doug Crowe's term has expired on the DeKalb County Mental Retardation Board. And we have, Regina McCullough has agreed to serve in that capacity. So do we have a motion to?
I'll pay her to the board. She's willing to serve. I appreciate her service because that's definitely a board that you, you have to want to do something, you get nothing out of that monetarily. It's just supposed to be a service board.
Right, I second.
They got a motion and a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carried. All right, our next council meeting will fall on July the 4th. And I don't know many people that want to be here on July the 4th. So we need to reschedule that meeting.
What have we done in the past? Done it later in the week or the next week?
Sometimes in the past, we will just cancel the meeting and not have one for that period of time and double up at the next one. You know, we pay our bills and everything on the second meeting and it's July the 4th is the first meeting and I don't have a problem with it. And if something comes up, we call a special meeting. If something comes up critical, we could call a special meeting.
I think we've got some things we need to address toward budget issues and things. So I would, sometimes they've been put off till Thursday. Sometimes they're put off to the next week. If we can meet the 11th and then the 18th would be our second meeting, which we should be able to take care of bills that meeting because that's after the 15th. Would that be enough time for you to close out? So the 18th, we could make closer bills out. So we don't have to have that meeting, but I've got some things that we might want to address. And I don't have a problem doing it on the 11th. It's the Tuesday between the two meetings.
That's fine with me. You need a motion? I made a motion to meet on the 11th.
We can set the time between now and then, but we can go ahead and schedule the 11th for publication. And then we can set the time prior to that. We want to meet that day or meet that night. If we're going to have a considerable amount of stuff, we might want to meet at night. We've agreed to do that a few times during the year, so. Or if you want to decide that now, I'd be good with it however.
I think we can set that time.
We'll set the time between now and then.
Yeah, between now and then.
We'll just meet the 11th and then we'll set the time prior to. Same to motion, meet on the 11th.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carried. Okay, we need to authorize bids for special plant mix required for the resurfacing of sewer rehab areas.
Outdoors requiring us to bid out that mix that they want to put on the rehab area. So we'll probably take it on the 11th. We're going to have a meeting that day. We can set the bids and open them on that day to get it approved.
This week.
Special plant mix? It's simple same.
It's what they use on, it's what the state requires, it's different than ours.
It's just not different that we have to bid for that project since we're taking state money for it, so.
Although we already got bid.
Yeah, I make motion authorize bids for that and then we can open them on the 11th.
So we got a motion and a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carried. Okay, Mayor?
Let's do the payroll changes first. Required the council approval. Y'all know, looked at those, I think the committees have looked at them.
I talked to Red, he's good with his, y'all familiar with it? If y'all good with it, I'll make a motion to adopt these changes.
Second.
They got a motion and a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Okay. A.D.M.'s been in town last week or so doing, finishing up their Phase 2 study of the old hospital. We've had quite a few calls from people wanting to know what was going on up there. Anyway, the samples that they took, if they haven't already, are going to EPA in Atlanta. And they will review the samples to see if it's sufficient to call it a brownfield site. If they do deem it a brownfield site, then we stand some real good chance of getting some grant money and what have you. We'll have to make a determination. Once that's done, as to what we're going to do from a legal standpoint. Anyway, it's looking much better than it has. To go along with that, while they were here, talking to one of the men up there that was in charge of doing the Phase 1 study of Marty Fanberg's property down at Old Marmill Steel location, saying he thought we were going to ask for a Phase 2 study, which the proposed owner did want. And I said, well, I've already asked for one. So anyway, I went back and found the letter, refiled it. So we're waiting to see if they want to do a Phase 2. I think that if the Phase 2 turns out on that, that that might be purchased and some good come out of it from another business. Tim and I have been talking somewhat about the paving situation. Jessica and I have talked about money. We've kind of got a limit on our paving this time on account of the rehab pay. But since we're getting $100,000 from the state to help with doing that, I think we can add to our paving list. And we had in the budget, what, 350, wasn't it originally?
I'm sorry, or paving with payment?
The paving budget.
Wait, did you, you did the paving budget, right? Paving's not actually part of the city budget.
The three cent tax?
No, we're just talking about the, what we normally would put in our paving budget. Our three cent tax money and our five cent or whatever it is, we've got sufficient to do considerably more than that if we need to.
We had originally 380,000 on the paving list and then after Red, Johnny and I wrote it, we knocked it down to 200 and... 200 and...
220.
Well, it'd be about 260 after we added Kellett. And then if we do the police department right now, it'd be 268,000.
268.
That was what the Red and Johnny and I, when we wrote it, that was the number we came up with with the addition of Kellett Circle and the police department.
The rehab cost is supposedly estimated about 159,000, which we'd get 100 of that back, give us another 59. So my point is, we have the money available to do some more than what we've talked about, if we want to do it. And if somebody knows of an area that maybe we missed that needs to be done, bring it to our attention and we can present that at a different date and see what everybody wants to do. I would, Tim's got a good load this time because of having to do the rehab area and it may be that you're not going to have time to do a lot more anyway.
Well, if we do more, it's going to take, we've got to have two to three weeks' notice to do the prep work or paving it. And then that's going to put our paving into the end of August, maybe September. So I really wouldn't recommend it, but that's...
Okay, well, if you don't recommend it, we won't do it. We've added quite a few since this list started, so I think you said about 48.
I also think it would be a problem getting the materials. I think, I don't, you know, I think you have to preorder the amount of...
Well, he does with the way the situation is this time, that's for sure.
Yeah, but that's what I'm saying, there's not, the availability of the materials is not that great. And we, Johnny and I and Tim wrote the paving list and we're scraping out pretty close. And we did a good job, I think, of going over and looking at it and figuring out the ones that need to, you know. That was in bad shape, the ones that we picked out to repave. And some of the rest of them, you know, that, they're in need, but they can wait till next year. And I think we did a pretty decent job.
I'm not, I'm not saying that at all. I'm just saying if there's some others that need it done and we did have the money to do it, if we had the time to do it. And since Watergraze is not running their paving plant this time except for anybody but us, Tim's got to work with them. Because they're not going...
One addition of that, the state's going to be patching Main Street probably two weeks to three weeks. So they'll run for that. But us and the state's only two they'll be running for this year.
All right. Our handrails for the theater are on order. They should be here by the end of the month. I thought they would have already been here by now, but hopefully they'll... I talked to Roland about that the other day. It won't take long to put them in once we get them. Our flag contest has been extended to this Friday. So we're taking additional entries. We're getting in a few every now and then. 90% of them have come from tour classes in the school system. Others have come from very few adults, I'll put it that way. Most of them are children. We've got to come up with a panel to judge these, to come up with the winners. So I'm looking for volunteers who want to be judges on the flag contest. Now, don't everybody speak at one time.
I'll do it.
I'd be glad to.
We got three. Somebody else?
Motion to close.
So you want to be included in that hearing?
I didn't say that, I was...
Three's leading the room.
His name's a color, I think he should be included.
Yeah, Red, his name.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, well, I'll help. So we'll all get the blame or the credit, one or the other. In all honesty, I've looked at them and there's some pretty good ones in there, but I have yet to find one flag that I felt like embodied our city. But I've found several that you could take parts of one and parts of another one and I think you could make a really nice flag. Of course, we're going to have to judge them based on who's got the best and this sort of thing. But whether we actually use that design or a portion of that design will be determined at a later date. But since we're going to announce this at the fireworks, we need to make the decision as soon as we can. So I'll be, I'll be hollering at y'all next week sometime when we get together. And I believe that's it.
Do we need a motion?
Fireworks is the 30th.
July the 30th is our fireworks.
Late June.
June 30th, yeah, I'm sorry. We've got July the 4th on the brain. We're doing it in June.
What time's the date?
Everybody, everybody be sure and come out and be a part of that. It's going to be, looks like a good lineup for the day. What time does that start, Greg?
Gates open at 5:00.
Five.
Entertainment start at 5:30. Mari's been working on a lot of vendors, so we've got, right now it looks like Cool Shavings, Lemonade, Bum Cakes, Rib Shack, Sally's Smoking, Barbecue and Italian Shaved Eyes. Ice, the Donut Factory, James the Corn Man, we're pending that one, and maybe possibly Homemade Ice Cream, so, the Meat Wagon, so, several different vendors.
Be a lot to do that night. I'd like to say I appreciate everybody being here today. John being here, giving us a presentation, and your board members that came and supported. And again, I'd like to say thanks to Walter for being here, and thanks for your 20 years of service.
President, I say something. I definitely appreciate sitting down at the council and just watching you guys operate and looking out for the employees. I remember that discussion Red and I had, but I really appreciate you guys continuing to open up things and look for things, because these employees are very important. They always have been important to us. And keep looking for ways to improve it. I know you guys are doing it, and you take a chance by making sure these guys know that you appreciate it, and I appreciate that. And also, I'd like to say too, as being a city council member, look for ways also to increase the council pay, because you guys are, you guys are underpaid for what you do. I mean, you may, you may burn the gas money up for what you do, you run around, so really, you're not being paid. I'm a citizen now. So, I say, as a citizen, I would like to know that we, that we tell you guys, we appreciate you guys. I know it's difficult, but you have to make the decision to do that. I just wanna encourage you, and I hope that residents from this area will also get on board and understand that you take care of the citizens without asking anything for yourself. But sitting in there, I know, I would just like to say, I vote that you guys have an increase, you know, in the things you do. Because right now, you're blowing out everything on gas. If you're doing what you're supposed to do, and I know you are, you're going in the hole. So, I appreciate what you guys are doing.
Walter, let me ask you a question. You served on it for 20 years. I've been on there eight plus. And you mentioned the pay of the council. When was it last changed? Do you know?
I don't know if it was changed. I can't remember.
It's 2000 or 2004, wasn't it? I don't know. I think it was.
Well, it wasn't, it wasn't very much. We determined where you're going in the hole with everything you have to do. So, I don't, you know, I'm just saying, it's something to consider. I know the citizens need to get on board and then let you guys know, because you have to make decisions to vote in, you have to run for reelection again, you know. So, that's kinda tricky in there. So, I just want, just wanna say that. It's important that, that we as citizens know that. We need to tell you guys also that we appreciate your job that you're doing this week, this night. It's tough decisions, and, you know, 1,000, 1,500 dollars a month, that's, you know, that's just a token to say, hey, we appreciate it. So, I hope that we can see our way, and I hope that citizens get behind that, and employees also will get behind that and tell you guys that we appreciate the things that you do. So, that's all I gotta say about that. I hope I see it come to fruition, and I hope some of you guys will be beneficial to that if you see, you see a way to do it. So, thanks a lot for what you guys do.
I would like to second what Walter is saying. It's easy for me because I'm not running next time. So, I would vote to put the pay up next time. I know it makes a little difficulty because some people look at it and say, well, you don't do nothing but two nights a month, you know. They don't know what they're talking about. And just Scottsboro, for example. The Scottsboro mayor is paid 70,000 a year. His councilmen are paid, all five of them are paid 70,000. So, he's split five ways. And they set that up a few years ago that way. I get 58,000, y'all get 700 a month.
Get six.
You get six? Okay. More shaving.
Give it a try.
Red, Red, I wanna get 600. You better check in on that, Red. But anyway, I think that's something that definitely does need to be considered. It really is. And even that those figures, it's worth more than that. I mean, you won't find a job in business that you have to put up with what you have to put up with that wouldn't pay many times over what you're getting paid. So, need to think about it.
And the thing about that is, we can't raise our pay. We have to set the pay for the next elected body. And that's what people need to understand. If, if we address that issue, then that's the next elected body that would benefit from that. And that's always been a hindrance to that because people didn't wanna raise it and take a chance on not getting reelected because they raised their pay. But I know that something's gotta be addressed. The mayor's pay here is way low. Council pay is low compared to other cities, but we've got some other things to address ahead of that. But it's something we're gonna have to look at this year. And there's no guarantee that any of us will be here in four years to run again, but whoever comes in after us, they should have the benefit of that ahead of time, so.
And if we choose to run again, if we've done a good job in those three years, three years that's left, and you feel like we deserve that, if we raise that pay, then you can vote us back in. If not?
Exactly.
You know, you can vote somebody else back in.
I appreciate Walter taking that elephant out of the closet, putting it in the ring. Because we've kinda talked about that, and I'll be honest with you, I didn't know when I ran exactly what the council pay was. I knew it was somewhere around that, and I didn't run for that. But I can tell you, Walter's exactly right. If you get out here and do what you need to do to be a proactive and working council member, 600 minus taxes doesn't go very far. I pay for my own cell phone, most of y'all do too, our own vehicles, our own gas. I'm not whining about that, but that's something that, if we do that, I'm like Brian. I wouldn't care to make that as public and as transparent as possible when we get to that point. And if we do a good job, it won't be an issue in three years. If we don't, then I'll go to the house and cut down one of my jobs. So, it's out there, and we'll hear about it one way or the other. That's something we'll address in the near future, I'm sure, one way or the other.
Well, before we leave, I just wanted to thank all the departments that worked so hard this last week with all the things, events we had going on. I know a lot of you did special things for me or helped with special events and did a good job and did what I asked you to do. And I just appreciate that, and it just shows how we can all work as a team to accomplish one purpose. So, I just wanted to thank each of you for your hard work during last week, especially the weekend.
It went over well, and I know we ought to probably track this. We had every room in Fort Payne booked for several, several days going into the week through the weekend. We had people staying out of town to come into town for events. So, there's a lot more people here than it looked like because they were all over town. And I appreciate everything everybody did. Third Saturday was a big, big crowd.
And just to echo what Lynn said, you know, we are a team, and we're, we're the Fort Payne team. We're Fort Payne City. Every one of us is involved, and that's what I like about this council. Everybody on this council is a team, and we work as a team. It's not, no big eyes and little gues. We're all, you know, we're all working for the same, same thing. And that's, I think, with your being here at this meeting, I think that's, you know, speaks the same volumes from you two, so. Go into executive session.
I'd make a motion to go into executive session, discuss litigation.
They've got a motion and a second to go into executive session. Thank you all for coming.